I now call the Palatine County Support Supervisor's workshop to order. Mr. Smithers will let you know how you can attend remotely.
Thank you, Madam Chair. During the public comment period, if you wish to speak from home, you can use Zoom to raise your hand, or if you call in, simply press star nine on your phone and we'll pick it up. Thank you very much.
Okay, a few introductions. Immediately to my right is Mr. David Williams, representing District One. Myself, Karen Carmack, representing District Five. Immediately to my left is Mr. Tom Berry, representing District Two. Next to him is Mr. Mike Byerly, representing District Three. Next to him at the end is Mr. Bill Cox, representing District Four. We also have Mr. Ned Smithers, our county administrator, Mr. Tom Latchney, our county attorney, and Andrew Pompey, our director of planning, Allison, planning assistant, and Brett Shardine, deputy county administrator. If we can stand, Mr. Byerly, if you can lead us in a pledge, and Mr. Williams, if you can give the indication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, fellow. Thank you for another wonderful day in Palatine County and all the many blessings we enjoy. Amen.
Alrighty, any requests to postpone, amend the agenda? Not I move, we proceed with the agenda as presented by the second. Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on, we'll have our first public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please state your name and full address for the record. You have three minutes as an individual, or five minutes if you're speaking as a group.
I, Karen Wells, thirteen eighteen Payette Road. In the last meeting, David said one of the things that taught my attention was that we really ought to look to compromise. From out here, not many people stop there outside of me, but you get a little bit of this is different from outside me. We're not like new conversation. And from out here, I'm not seeing actions, the winner, presentations suggest they want to compromise. That usually sounds like, tell me about your idea. What's your real concern? You know, that match up with mine. What is the common ground? I'm just waiting to hear that conversation. I think that marketplace, people that want to bring business out here are looking for that conversation as well. They're looking for something a little different. So you says, we want you out here. And we're willing to kind of bend and noodle a little bit. Why we're maintaining our core culture. We're not going to give up on that. I still think your words were very right on data.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anybody on Zoom, Mr. Smithers?
Zoom is clear. Thank you.
Alright, seeing no one else, I will close the public comment period. And we will move on to our workshop discussion, but first I would like to make a very quick point. This is Mr. Pompey, our planning director's last meeting. And I've worked with Andrew for four years now, and worked very closely with him, and I just want to thank him sincerely for his service. He's, I think, been a true asset to the county, and I will miss him. Now, that being said, if we can...
Well, it's usually tradition when somebody's leaving and is accepting a promotion to another county that they treat the board. Sorry, Andrew, you rant. At the end of the meeting, you can tell us where to turn to.
He's like, I'll keep you posted. Oh, okay, we're going to continue on with our discussion where we left off, right, guys? Let's see. Where were we at? Okay, thank you. Gateway Business.
Next one.
Yep. Alrighty, Gateway Business. Okay, let's get started, guys. What do you all think of that?
I've got a couple of questions.
It'd be great if you can go, because I gotta get organized.
Pompey, this is our first business. We, I won't break the ground for a couple of things. What are we trying to accomplish with Gateway Business? The Gateway Business designation is intended to accommodate industrial and light industrial units along major highways around sixty. So we have light industrial, we've taken out some of the light industrial, have we not? Or are they all there? That's not here, but what are we... Well, for example, the general types of uses that we allow or recommended for Gateway Business are offices, light manufacturing, research and development, retail, restaurant services, and lodging. So it calls out specific subsectors of that stuff, like industrial. Way back from the bit, plastic brand. Correct. So as opposed to our commercial classification, this has got light industrial uses today.
Should we say that?
Say again.
Should we say that as opposed to drilling down and listings specifically those uses that may be classified under light industrial?
I think that's a very important distinction, okay?
Because that wasn't clear to me, Andrew.
So you want, you think, adding that in?
Yeah. That's a critical difference in just commercial classification for the those include light industrial. Now, we don't have a, we don't have a, we don't have a zoning district that supports that yet.
Supports light industrial.
Light industrial and commercial together. That's correct. The commerce zoning district does allow some limited industrial, but probably not to the degree that just slates the designation. So you can, in commerce and zoning districts, for example, you can have light being manufactured up to 10,000 square feet. So it limits the size and type of things. So this doesn't... This land use designation has a little bit more flexibility in terms of light industrial.
Okay, so we could address that in zoning. Yeah, okay.
When we get to the commercial uses or designation, the land use designations, and then when I start talking about open space requirements, this has got fifteen percent. We can, we could use part of that open space, natural water features, floodplains, hazards, stuff that's already protected. Or we look where, and we want, we want to keep, I'm not happy with the open space.
I think we should mix it personally.
You're saying should get rid of it?
Yeah, because in some of the parcels, it's just not really, what are we trying to achieve with it? I would rather see a development come in that puts more emphasis on like the landscaping and the architecture instead of necessarily open space. For instance, if you have like a light manufacturing kind of facility, what's the open space serve? What's the purpose of it? You know, I mean, if, you see what I'm saying? I would rather put the emphasis towards something else instead of worrying about having fifteen percent open space. And a prime example would be the, the Lookstone Project, you know, the one where you had the Burger King and all that. You know, they kind of did a little dabble a little bit space here, a little dabble a little bit.
The eyebrows.
Right, but the point being is it really didn't serve a purpose. So I personally kind of like, I think you should just get rid of it.
Should we then change the landscaping and buffering to compensate for that?
I would do something like that over having the open space. But that would be more in your zoning.
Right, well, we address that in here too. Mr. Pompey, is there, in the Gateway zoning district that would support this, is there a, is there a maximum percentage of the lot that can be used or, I mean, do we force open space by having a maximum?
Right.
Every zoning district has a maximum building coverage, but we don't have a maximum in terms of area of parking and that kind of thing. There's a disincentive to have too much parking because you have to accommodate it with stormwater, which can be expensive and all that. But we do have building coverage, maximum. See, that works against, that almost, that generates open space, wouldn't you?
Right.
So you, I don't, I agree with you about open space, but you're going to have to look at both of those together.
Because since you know, open space such as plazas, small park squares, and green should be dispersed throughout the project, a lot of these, it's going to be singular, and like, I think some of that we shouldn't, I'm getting a little like Bill Cox here, but we should work on that verbiage and take some of that out, you know? I mean, I just think it's too limiting.
You're talking about the open space?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, you know...
But I don't think you will achieve what you're doing unless you also then subsequently look at the maximum coverage that your building can have on the lot. Okay? If this, if you can only have thirty-five percent, that can have enough.
Yeah.
Okay, then you generate that by itself generates open space.
So, do you guys agree that the open space is kind of useless in Gateway Business, or?
Would you want like a larger project to have open space or to care about the size? You have, you know, more of a master planned type commercial, like Oakbridge. Like Oakbridge, that development doesn't have any open space. Would you want to have that open space if a new version of that came in?
I think you asked a good question.
Yeah, um, what do y'all think?
I think you answered that right. If it's, you know, something of that...
Magnitude.
Yeah, that's pretty big. Open space at that point becomes an important issue.
Oakbridge doesn't have, Oakbridge doesn't have.
It doesn't have that, so do you dislike the way it looks?
I'm happy with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I envision open space in that setting, to me, just screams, that's the smoking area. I don't smoke, but that's what I, I look, I...
Smoking like a true fireman.
The way it's being described, that's what I said.
I don't know, I mean, from my perspective on that, you know, each place, I guess, could have their own lunchtime picnic area or something like that.
Right.
Not the smoking area. Well, because there's signage that says, you know. But that's what I would envision, and it could be a place where, like in Oakbridge, sidewalks, you're talking the sidewalk, but you do the sidewalks and they're walking. So maybe there's this one area, it doesn't fit everybody because Oakbridge is kind of big, maybe it does because I'm already on the walk. It's centralized area where you can have some open space and people could table.
Yeah.
A quaint place to be for relaxing during lunchtime, and maybe they get a thirty-minute break at work with that.
But with Oakbridge, it's kind of hard to do something like that. How do you, how do you do the open space because they have pads?
Yeah, I think...
So...
So definitely have to be for, you know, future projects or, you know, maybe there's a central... Maybe they, they, in the beginning, you know, there's a dedicated space, you know, to where they can do that. Oakbridge doesn't want it.
Yeah, that's...
I mean, you just said, my, my, my business model says I don't need that to attract business.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I'm more on the... I just think it, it sounds good, but the application of it doesn't quite usually get where you envision.
I don't have choices. Option.
Agreed, and they would certainly have an option instead of a mandate.
Yeah, well, to where if you did, if you wanted to put in the, the open space, you could do that. There's no restrictions keeping you from the...
Yeah. Yeah.
So, and do you want to... Remove the minimum open space?
Yeah. Yeah. I think you could say encourage, you could say encourage, that's...
So something that should be dispersed, we'll say, open, in the first sense of open space, open space such as...
Plazas, are you really going to have a plaza?
You know, are encouraged by not essential. Well, I guess we'll just say, I would just say, not required.
Oh, one other thing while you're doing this, and I don't know if you guys would concur with this on the page fifty-three, statement that has driven me nuts since we've had this plan is campus style development. We don't have one campus style development in the entire county. We prefer just get, I don't care if we say, well, large scale development is preferred. Uh, page fifty-three.
Yes, two and three.
So hack it. Um, hang on, I can go to it.
True. It's nine meters.
They're ninety on it.
Ninety if you want.
Never stops with development, yeah.
So to summarize Gateway Business, we want to encourage more of the light industrial, right?
Well, you're not discouraging commercial, it's just...
Yeah.
So I mean, you want, you want it to be seen.
Yeah. Lose the open space.
I have one more question. Pompey, under landscaping and buffering, outside of commercial nodes, what is the distinction? We have a distinction of commercial node, what's that? That's, uh, that's referencing the routes, in the Route sixty special area plan, the planning commission identified commercial nodes. And in those areas, businesses that need visibility are encouraged, but outside the nodes, more buffering is encouraged. So it coordinates with... So we can see that on a map? Yeah. Okay, I have to get the map, but this, they're two different pieces here now, and I don't understand why they're linked together.
We'll be talking both nodes separately.
This is, uh, all, the only designation within nodes is Gateway Business.
Should we talk about that now, since that's, you know, why don't we talk about that now?
I basically remember where they are.
Yeah. Andrew, can you explain the whole node thing a little bit more to us?
Well, so yeah, basically, the nodes that are around existing signalized intersections, that's on page... The full plan, you guys have, page one twenty-eight. Okay, so there it is. One twenty-eight, or the Route sixty.
Or this map. Do you have this one, Bill? You guys, you have that one, right?
So, that's not the same one.
No, there's, there's another one that's very similar. You want to look at that one?
Yeah, I was going to say, we'll...
Look at mine, and I'll tear her. So that'd be great.
So I guess at the first joint workshop, there was discussion about individuals from Route sixty and whether or not businesses should be seen or not. So this was, these nodes are really getting to aesthetics and landscaping. So inside the nodes, which are located at signalized intersections, basically, that's the one up there. Excuse me, Andrew, I'm sorry, Flat Rock stuff. Yeah, so in those areas, businesses can be visited. That's where, we already have a lot of visible businesses, you know, South Creek, you got commercial stuff right up to the road and that kind of thing. So I guess what this plan is saying, inside the nodes, it's okay to have smaller buffers, but higher quality are actually... So you can see the buildings, they look nicer. Outside the nodes, we want more landscaping so that the buildings are less visible. That's the general justice aesthetics of what it's like.
Do you think this is realistic?
Uh, I don't think, I think it's realistic, but I don't think you're not going to see, I don't think it's realistic to say you're not going to see any businesses outside of the... I think greater, greater buffers, I think, are realistic. I mean, you're going to see, one of the missions you're reviewing zoning case with buildings set back farther from Route sixty, but you're still going to see it, but just farther back with some more landscaping in the front. You know, like one example, we have a plain view development in the right east of Cappy. You can see that, that there's more buffering than there is at South Creek, for example. So I think, to say the buildings are not, and the planning issue commission purposely was not super specific, saying a hundred foot buffer, it said greater buffers. And it was really, that's really intended to try to get the conversation at the workshop where there was, people thought, commented that they didn't want to see businesses and some people didn't, didn't care if the architecture was good. And it's also attempted, attempted to try to, it's kind of continuous strip of development down Route sixty. Is are the building standards, you envision the same building standards inside the commercial node and outside? I don't know if they get to that, but one thing that is in the Route sixty special area plan, which is like on the next page that I can see, they try to get at the architecture of each node and give a recommendation because there's already kind of different styles going on in each one. So try to get some cohesion, there's some recommended architecture inside the nodes themselves. But in terms of architecture outside, I don't think it... We have, all, all the commercial buildings have to be approved, architecture has to be approved by the planning. Yeah, that's right. Okay, so they're not going to be using, and you bring them, you work with the developer, and you bring them, that to the... You're not going to be working from different kinds of standards from different places, are you? No, I guess what that's saying is, it's talking about the styles. So, so trying to get cohesion in, in one area. But that's part of the architecture plan, what's around. Yeah, yeah, and when those applications are evaluated, we need something to evaluate the buy. So the compliance has to be guiding, saying, hey, in this area, if you want X style, planning commission decides, well, if the building architect is presented, does it go with the style? Is the vibe appropriate for those or not, you know, just see what... You're confused, man.
I'm very confused.
Do you like the nodes?
Where do the nodes end? You know, I think, so when you're here, where's the defined area, where does the node end, east and west?
Well, it's, it's, yeah, I mean, it's not a hard edge, it's kind of a broad area.
Yeah, that's what I have though.
But I mean, when you're driving, you can kind of tell when it's South Creek area versus...
Yeah.
It's kind of more of it.
But sprawl will take over, over the next decades.
I think you, I don't know if, guys, personally, I give it, I think they just add a layer of unnecessary to something, and I don't exactly know, I don't, I don't know if it adds anything, you know?
I agree. Maybe, well, another would be, for example, Dorset Road and Route sixty?
Where you can see everything.
Okay, well, you can see everything now, okay? I'm just, so if you reduce the setbacks, you know, from that intersection or along Dorset Road or along Route sixty, what happens, you know, when that year comes, when you're going to have to go to six lanes?
So, I don't think, it's not talking about reducing setbacks, it's saying, for example, in that area, somebody came in with a green zone for burger doodle, we would just do the standard landscaping setbacks, whereas if someone was outside the node, we'd want to see more buffering, greater landscaping, greater setbacks. So I don't think we're reducing, we're just talking about increasing outside of the nodes. So, to the west of, to the west of Sheetz, Dorset Road, you don't care what you do, you don't see it. Okay, so that had less, that had more landscaping and buffering? That, that would be less buffering and less landscaping, but better architecture because it's in the, we don't care if we see a building there because...
It's in the net.
In the net.
You see everything.
Architecturally and aesthetically, you're going to be more advantaged. Yeah, whereas like across from Holly Hills, for example, something was built there, there's already a bunch of trees, there's nothing there. We want it to be farther back. Okay, what about across, South Creek is a node, but across from South Creek is a commercial. Yeah, so we, there, we wouldn't care if we see it because it's... So they cut down all trees? But we still have the minimum in our zoning ordinance, the core will offer us thirty feet wide. We would just be saying, hey, we want something deep across the road.
I just think you should have more consistent standards for that strip instead of, that's just me personally, if we want...
I agree.
You know, I just think it keeps, that's my personal...
I saw a definite fan should do it, so I do it, but I haven't...
What do you guys think?
I prefer, I prefer the nodes because I, to me, it seems like we're going to have some breakup of the process, you know, we're going to kind of come and go, come and go, come and go, versus just come and then finally exit. That's what I kind of envisioned, no, I think...
Do you think time that the node will dry up where the development goes?
I think to some degree it will.
Why?
Because I, I would assume if, if I had the, what do you use, Burger Doodle? I'd want to be, if I was the owner of Burger Doodle, wanted to build one of those buildings, I'd want to be seen.
Isn't that driven by traffic counts?
I don't think it is, as much. I think it plays a role.
Very much it. So I think it's rooftops and tra, and traffic. But they know exactly where they need to go to, or to be able to have the amount of business that they want to capture.
How many do know where they want to go? And they think about all the people that transit our county and other counties that are, you know, driving through the, driving through to go to Cumberland State Forest, that don't have a plan, but it's somewhere around eleven-thirty in the afternoon, or in the morning, and got to figure out where to stop for lunch. So I think traffic counts do play a significant role, don't get me wrong, but I, I think if you can't see that business, they're going to be wanting to not stop.
I don't, I don't think we've got a problem seeing business. I really don't. I don't, I don't think that reduced buffers are going to have that big of a effect when we're there.
Well, what happens if a Burger Doodle for, or Burger King or whatever wants to go in outside, I know, of the node? They would just have to, they could go there, but they would have to have the entrance.
So during the zoning, we recommend, the compliance, we recommend a larger buffer here. And so we request a larger buffer, and then we all decide, yarmulke starts.
Yeah.
These are all at lights, that's, that's the thing about it, they're all at lights. I mean, you're, some of your traffic count, you know, if I was coming to Palatine, Karen, I said, I want to open up Burger Doodle. Do I want to be, you know, west of Rocky Oak Road, which would be west of the Dunkin' Donuts? My answer would be no. I'd want to be at Flat Rock, South Creek, or the core. That's where I'd want to be, if I have a business that I want to see, a Burger Doodle. If I had a, here's one, an auto parts business, I want to be there, that's where, I don't want to be out to the side. Now, if I get into the industrial type where you can have a warehouse or something with, you know, more space manufacturing or something like that, I don't really care, it doesn't matter. So when they call in, and I'm trying to get into, to your position now, if somebody calls and says, I want a Burger Doodle, well, you can put it anywhere on Route sixty you want, or you can put it in these nodes, right? Is that easier, better, does it make it, you know, when you, so you don't have a confrontation or a misunderstanding with these developers or whoever wants to come in, or proprietor, or whatever they want to do? And, yeah, and, and most of the time, those types of businesses want to be a signalized intersection, so we're not... It's kind of a point, they don't want to be in some random structure. Right, yeah, they want to, they want to be in these nodes. And again, this, the planning mission had a lot of back and forth of this, and they were not even in this either, but really the intent was really to get to a compromise where, as I said, at that joint workshop, some people didn't want to see, didn't want to see every single business, didn't want to see street development. But in reality, some businesses need to be seen, so this is kind of supposed to be a balance of that.
What's your way of, your economic development, sir?
I think, so yeah, I think getting to the point that developers wanting to be for that type of development, they need traffic, need visibility, they're going to want to be at a couple key places already, so they've already identified based on traffic counts visibility, and you don't want to be in one of these places. So I think having some kind of tool for us to say, okay, here, we are okay, you know, with you being seen directly from the road, like Dunkin', for example, but outside of that, one more screen, like Classic Brand and Marvel, for example, they have a more significant tree buffer along Frontage. So I think it's useful. I don't know, the only concern now, thinking about it, I have is just the thickness of them. When you're at the exact intersection... at the exact intersection, Dorset 60, it's very easy, but looking at this, if there are a couple parcels over, then, you know, it, it becomes hard to say what you're in, you're out with the standards, um, but I think it's a tool somehow, whether it's on this map, or whether it's in your, there's something differentiating the, the auto parts stores, the fashion restaurants, the things that need to be seen, try business, accommodating that somehow, but then the other would say, you know, preferences to not be seen at all before the fact, so I think that, that end goal that gets us to is something I think we want and will be very useful when we're talking with developers, but, um, you know, maybe we could think of some other ways to accommodate that, that's a version of this or something else.
So you guys think keep the nodes, staff-wise? Because I mean, one thing about it, you're gonna be the one negotiating this, and, you know, I mean, kind of from your experience.
Yeah, and I think the nodes, the things that are useful from the nodes is, again, negotiate the buffer, and then the architecture, so that we evaluate these applications. Right now, we're just.
When you say, uh, negotiate the buffer, are you talking about a range?
So, for example, when an applicant comes in, he said, these are the zoning standards, and then I say, these are the things the planning commission, the board, this is always talking about, we're always talking about signage, we're always talking about landscaping, we're always talking about access, those are things that you should address through buffer conditions, so I would say, when you're outside of the node, would you be willing to proffer a larger buffer? And there's a yes or no, and then whatever they say will be evaluated in staff.
Okay.
Do you envision the node being really defined in zoning ordinance?
I see it more as green zone, not, no, okay, I would see it more as a evaluation tool as a green zone, that's how I, how I would see it.
So, I can, do we run into any, any problems where we're now defining where the node is, but it's really not measurable away down, so we have some morphous abevo, okay? Does that provide any problems for us?
I prefer morphous abevo to the whole comp. I'd say generally, the guide, and the more specific it tracks specifically we come, the more we stray from the intent and purpose of a comp plan.
Okay, so you're fine with?
Absolutely.
Yeah, you're, okay. You all okay with the nodes?
I am.
Okay.
It's all gonna be what it looks like when you get to the zoning ordinance.
All right, the nodes, Steve.
Okay, so gateway business is done, moving on to economic opportunity, which.
Where we are, where they are.
Yes. Yes, 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 I don't know if we have a lot of other options, where the nodes are, if we want to add one, or?
Well, I have, I have, I have a question.
Okay.
We're talking about economic opportunity or nodes, no, gateway business.
Okay, he's still on gateway business, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Okay, we're, okay, oh, in the village plan, gateway business, and then east side, what it used to make you check, that's gap in there, that's more.
Right here, is that what you're talking about?
I guess.
Okay.
Els Street.
Okay.
Right in there, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, usually, usually go all the way down, I believe, to the, to the lake, and now we're pushing back.
So.
That's on the north side of 60?
Mm-hmm.
You have to already talk about them?
Yes, sir.
So that's what it looks like for.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Why?
Okay, so the question is, why, why the reduction, what were we trying to accomplish?
And this was a whole discussion in 2019 that went back and forth a lot, um, this was just to concentrate the development closer to, the commercial development closer to, you know, Academy Road where it already exists, and have a break in development, so there's not a continuous strip, um, I don't think there's a, like I said, this was discussion back and forth a lot in 2019, I think that was the focus of commercial development around Academy, where it exists, and kind of have, there's already a natural break right now along Route 60, so, to retain that break, so it's not a continuous strip down from Academy Road all the way back to.
But that's still, but talking about the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven lots, parcels, uh, we go, we go back down, there we go, see, go all the way to the lake, the lake, can you come back again? Now they're gone.
That's pretty slow.
Right.
We've had that for three months.
I know, but it's cool, it's due to perks.
Where are you doing?
On the north side.
To the.
There, there's a lake there.
Yeah, yeah, perfect, there we go.
It's a little aggressive. I'm okay taking that up to the lake.
I just have a question, why did we take it out?
I mean, I, yeah.
Well, I, it's my district, so this is what I would say, is, is I'm, I'm gonna ask that we put it back in. We have water there, we have sewer there, right? I, I think it should be there, personally speaking.
I do as well.
Do we have water and sewer?
Yes.
Well, it's an auto routine of water, but, okay, I'll put some lines right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Bar.
Yeah. I mean, I.
Put the water sewer there.
I think put it back in.
So, had gateway business from the lake to, right, Branchway, whatever.
You're all good with that?
Yeah. You know, there's another piece of that right there that I want to talk about. Are you done?
Yeah, I just, um.
The, the parcels, um, where, is it Branch Forest Lake comes out, there's, I think, a thirty-six acre tract of land there, there's middle of family practice, um, where the land use designation is, there's the creek that runs through there. Yep, so I've had a lot of people from Branchway contact me and want to know if we would take that land use, and it uses the parcel barriers, the lines, and as opposed to doing that, use the creek, and that way, nobody, if you go in there, commercial development, they can't go on the other side of that creek, which quite frankly, it's not much there anyway, land-wise, until you get to the, um, I guess the eastern section of that, because that property goes up there to where Wakeback is, the parcels keep going on.
Isn't that, isn't that, can you turn on the priority conservation? I don't think you can, isn't that, doesn't that take it out?
You know, it's part of the.
Yeah. I don't think there's any of the right one there.
I mean, the folks in Branchway, that, that, that's what they're trying to get some more space, they don't want, you know, some of the.
I, I.
But that's true. Um, do you want to, uh, do you want to follow the creek?
Yep.
All the way to the parcels that front?
Yep.
So, so from there, all the way east to the east, we try, I saw this, to, to, you guys, there yet.
Wait a minute now, we, one of the things that this does now is splitting parcels and groups, right? Okay, and we made a, we made a decision, we had that, okay, that's what the whole map was, we just went through the middle of everything, okay, and we went to partial ones, so we can understand what we're doing.
The creek though is a clear boundary, it's not ambiguous, you know, before, what I think there was concern about, the 2010 plan was more blobby.
Yeah, interestingly, I was talking with Tom last week, and he kind of, back to your point, he doesn't mind blobby, he said ironically, blobby, if I'm correct, Tom, is okay with a comp plan, instead of following the parcel specifically, like we switched it to.
State code definition of comp plan, general, but going specific parcel to parcel is the opposite of general, and, and so now instead of a general layout of what we're having, we have a specific layout, and last we, we discussed the spec, one specific parcel and what color we should make it, and, and I, that's really not the purpose of a comp plan, fuzzy lines are better than parcel-specific lines, because what we don't want is somebody arguing that we pre-engage in spots, or pre-engage in saying this parcel here could be commercial the way next could not be, and, and so general is better than specific.
What you think?
I think the one area, Tom, I've ever set by, I think in reality, from a staff's position, that our staff are not really.
If it's.
Clear position.
This is.
I think all the creek makes sense.
The reality of rezoning, we may be rezoning all of parcels.
Yeah.
But it's making it clear that we only want the first one.
Okay.
So I guess like, if one of those long skinny parcels, you know, if someone came in to rezone that from CC, we want their conceptual plan to show everything south of the creek, and then keep the more.
Okay.
But they're, they're not even more than the creek next, it doesn't make.
There's nothing there, it's more of a mental.
You're gonna go across the creek.
You're right.
Mess with the middle lane.
They're not.
Go across the creek.
I, I think it's fine, it's not gonna happen anyway.
Yeah.
Go back to Oak Ridge, put your picnic table.
Okay. So we're, we're okay with the creek on it in that case?
Okay.
All right.
What else do you have, Bill?
Yeah, sixty each. The south side of sixty, we have a green area on sixty.
Where are, oh, okay.
There we go, right there, what, what's in there and what, what are we doing then?
Uh, that's from the 2019 plan, and that's where there's already a, a gap, kind of already between development, there's a lot of smaller residential lots, there's a private road in there, um, there's some, you know, topography, sometimes it's a lot higher than the roads, then it's a lot lower, uh, again, that was just to try to get it, retain that, retain a gap, so it's not a continuous strip all the way down, that was an area based on the 2019 plan where there wasn't a lot. Where's, uh, uh, so the, the western end of that gap is, which means very light, and then you go down, there's a, a little private road, it's like Rose, or.
Rose Lane.
Yeah.
It's Rose Lane.
That one, and there's a bunch of little houses back there.
It's more sugar lots.
All right.
Joe Bikes.
So, you think the.
Once again, we got, we got water and sewer there.
Yeah.
No one's ever contacted our office about a parcel, I don't think.
What do you, do you guys want to, it doesn't matter to me if you want to make it purple or.
Which part are you talking about?
Right.
So, south side of sixty, terminal, basically colony constructions, building and, um, urban road.
They pulled all the timber off of it maybe four or five years ago?
So you guys want to make it purple or leave it green, that I think.
I'd like to have, someone asked me, why is Wayne not purple, I'd like to answer the question, okay, right now, that's. Why is it, um, why, why is it green and not purple?
Because he just, I think he, he basically said, the odds of it developing are slim because of topography issues, there's a private road subdivision back there, and there's.
And you've got no inquiries.
Yeah, no inquiries, and.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
But, I mean, there is.
It doesn't matter to me.
There is one larger, there is one larger piece, the one out of timber that wraps around, uh, the commercial part.
Yeah.
Or, but the parcel was, in that green, the westernmost parcel.
Yeah, that's, that's the largest one, you know, in there.
Yeah, that's, and we're getting to that, let's face it, if somebody came in and wanted to develop it, we would probably develop it regardless of whether it's green, purple.
But topography is gonna be a problem for that.
Yeah, so I don't, I mean, I'd be personally, making it purple is probably the how, I don't have an issue with that. Think about this a little bit, maybe this is not, the backside of that is, um, where, uh, there's some, I don't know, it's like an industrial park, there's an auto repair garage, there's actually two or three of Lehman Brothers, um, Gutter and all is back there, if somebody wanted to come in from that backside and develop that, connect the node, that, that may, you know, create an opportunity there, you know, for commercial development, coming from that backside as opposed to coming off of sixty. If I go one sixty and I come before this board, you guys are gonna tell me, you gotta put this two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar land, turn lane, whatever you want, whatever price, and I gotta do all these things, but if I can buy that piece of property and come in from that backside, I don't have to determine, because the turn lane is there for the Dorset Road, I just gotta come in through the backside.
Go over bridge.
Yeah.
They'll know, we're gonna get over.
They'll know.
But actually, you know, the, the, the parcels that are there, in, where that, I guess that it's a creek to the west of the creek, and to the north of the creek, the little edge that comes out there, that's easy, I don't know, big, wide, the creek just beyond there, but that's the, as you just said, I think that's the largest parcel that's in there, right? So that would be, and that, that would be the one, most likely somebody would want to buy to development, it's the largest one, the rest of them are cut up.
So I guess you want like that, or I would say, no, a little bit that, between the Vs and the creeks to be.
Yep, yep.
I'd like to have more information, size of parcels, number of parcels, the fact that the parcels, that, you know, does not, not, doesn't necessarily mean that they're on the different people, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I agree, you know, one person could have five, I have no idea.
Would it hurt us making it purple? You know, I mean, you don't say that, would it hurt making it? I don't know, just make it purple.
What, what, what are you gonna say, half hearts?
I don't know, I haven't gotten that far yet, but I was thinking, well, we'll do, maybe to that creek or something, I guess, yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
That's perfect, yeah, let's just do that.
Cool.
I've got more.
Yeah, and getting back, they were not gonna get seen.
I got a question.
I have to go with journalists.
No, I know, I don't know.
This is what staff.
Well, we got smart scale coming on the intersection too.
This, this is a question for staff, Redden and who will be familiar with the question, this is on, uh, eastern Route 60, Page Road, Ms. Weir had written us letters and spoken to us multiple times about parcels, oh, there being part of a subdivision that had been previously planted, and now we're designating them with each land use map as commercial or gateway business. What's, what's the situation with that?
And that's the, Allison has pulled up the, uh, eastern part of Route, whoops, Page Road, Route 60, so going up a couple lot, there's two lots, I think, past where the planned arbor stamps businesses, that's, uh, recommended as gateway business, um, and those lots were planted in the sixties or seventies as five-acre lots, so some of them are in the, you know, gateway business designation.
They already zoned this?
Uh, no, they're in ten, some were RC at one point, but, um, right now, they're very, they're zoned eight and ten.
Have they been subdivided, is, are they part of the subdivision, have they ever been subdivided?
Yeah, there was a subdivision back there in the sixties and seventies, where it's one of those, you know, strip lots down Page Road.
Did they get a rezoning?
I know, no, no, that was, that's just a.
Allison, could you turn on a zoning on that?
So, the line, pretty sure the line ends, yeah, that's a subdivision, yeah.
So we're taking a purple all the way up to that line, right?
Correct.
Those are the two lots.
Okay. It's okay. There's businesses there already, if I'm not mistaken.
In that area.
Yeah.
There's an arbor scapes, it's a business. There's that, uh.
And there's another one there. There's some.
They're, they're, they're in a purple.
Yeah.
And they're on the south side of Page Road, I believe. I don't think there's any businesses on that north side of.
Not on the north side.
Right.
Right.
And those, those parcels are on the north side. I, and I know where it was high hill there.
I think he was.
It's a dirt road and it goes back.
That's on the south side.
They were talking about the south side.
There are some on the north side. I didn't, I didn't want to talk about those.
That lot, that high hill is on the north side of Page Road.
If you wanna, I don't, I don't. So basically, it goes right up to, to that subdivision in the current draft.
But it's not a subdivision.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Maybe it's a subdivision as well.
It's, but is it, are there houses in there and like everything, like a normal subdivision or is it just then?
Well, not, not the area that CC or, uh, gateway business in the plan. It goes right up to where the R two zoning is.
Okay.
So I mean, there are houses in some of those lots right now that they're.
It's not like them.
Not a lot of houses.
Yeah, that's what I.
David, what did you want? It's your district.
No, I just wanna make sure that we weren't doing something that was, you know, contrary to, you know, what we should be doing. In other words, you know, address them the concern that if they had been rezoned and now we were designating them something different from what they've been rezoned to. That was my question.
But we.
So what I'm hearing is we're not doing anything. That's wrong.
Okay.
Now you'll do the requisite buffering going into those, you know, uh, VR two lots, right? You will, you will have buffering that protects those homes that are there.
And they would, I mean, that since the adjacent properties aren't so as right now.
They have to come for a reason.
Process.
Yeah.
So if you're, especially if you're trying to build a class one on the edge of that.
Yeah.
Or you're gonna require more new wood arbor skates down there in the middle, so.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I just wanna make sure we.
And even, yeah, any, there was, um, their, their requirement for, for parts.
Okay.
So those two lots are all purple then.
Okay. Anything else on gateway business?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Let's look at seven eleven.
Seven eleven going up to eighty eight is all economic opportunity. Why does it get with this?
Cause there are larger parcels that could accommodate something more master plan than just what the business suggests.
I mean, we had the dentists that couldn't even get in there.
Yeah, we have, but, I mean, it does include some small parcels, but there's particularly on the north side, some very large pieces over there. That's almost, well, not all.
Now this question is.
What we can do is talk about economic opportunity and see if we like the definition for that, you know what I mean? And then go back about that.
That's fine.
Okay. You done with gateway business? All right, next economic opportunity. So this is the one where you, it has a little bit of a residential componentry to it.
Yeah, so let's just talk about that right now. Get that off the show. Yeah, the number nine.
Okay, I have a question, Mr. Parker. Why do we have density that high?
Um, residential business. This was a topic that was discussed a lot by the planning commission. It was not a hundred percent agreement, but they ultimately kept it at these densities. Every time it was. A residential component was part of the master plan.
Given the history of zoning projects in Palatine County, why would we make such?
Well, that's, that's for y'all to decide.
Good answer. Good answer.
Okay, got it.
Punch, you're out of here front of you, right?
Well, I think, I don't think any of us want nine. Personally, I don't think any of us want nine. So that.
Why, why do we have a residential component at all?
I think we need some areas with a residential componentry. That's my opinion. Not nine, though. I don't want nine.
What do you mean?
Live with four.
Can, can, let me show you something. Allison, can I have a line? It is, first column, almost all the way to the bottom says RU.
Oh, what?
Scroll down.
There it is, RU right there.
Yep. Well, that, this is the RU which I think as we start talking about that number, okay? And it has. Can you get that box? Just, just the, the, where the lot.
The intensity dimension.
Yeah, there we go. So I, not necessarily that this is perfect, but where you have, uh, either public or sewer, uh, then it's one dwelling unit per two acres. And if you have either water or sewer, it's one acre and one dwelling unit per acre. And then you get your smaller lots like half acre, okay? This is what Scottville goes up. It gives you a, a visual, okay? And so as you start talking about, I find it useful as a, as a jumping off place, not the answer. When you start talking about these four, which is what, this is a half acre, you have a duplex, four dwelling units per acre. So this is where my mind goes to is, is something to help frame the discussion.
You like R two?
This, I like Scottville, okay? And that worked successfully. The latest, kinda jumping around, the latest development, what would I hear about Michael? Two developments. And one is VC and the other one is RU, okay? Is that the scale. Scottville seems to make people very comfortable. However, the new one, the, oh, I don't know whether lots are smaller or the homes are bigger.
It's tall.
Probably both, okay? And they don't feel like the scale.
I have heard that.
Okay, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
So that's the reason I go to RU because I got something that I can actually see, uh, that makes me feel better.
Are you all okay having a residential component in economic opportunity?
It depends on where the economic opportunity is.
Okay, okay. So that is like David, Bill, I mean, are you comfortable with having?
Not, not, not all sixty East.
Okay.
We didn't, we didn't even want, uh, a residential, no.
Neighborhood residential.
We didn't even want that.
I don't, I don't.
Before it came out. Okay, so if you didn't want neighborhood residential, why would you want something more dense?
I think to play devil's advocate with some of the economic development, I, I think if we are gonna get any, have to offer like a carrot to a degree. And I'm not saying a lot. I'm not saying, you know, what the exact number is, what the percentage is. I don't know. But I think.
Let's look at the two developers that have come in.
Okay.
Okay. Whether it was Eagle or whether it was, uh.
East West.
East West. Neither one of them wanted to touch the commercial.
Correct.
Okay, they had no interest in commercial at all. That's suppose they were forced to. Eagle wouldn't even talk to us about it. I mean, excuse me, East West wouldn't even talk to us about it. Eagle actually belonged to somebody else at any moment.
Right.
Okay, and so that's the fact. Uh, the, 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 the development there is for residential.
So let me ask you this, though. If we took out neighborhood residential and we have large lot development in, I think it was ninety-eight percent of the county. And it, it may be I'm the only one on the board that thinks we need smaller lot development so that that may be, I may be a lone soldier there. Where, where are we gonna put anything?
I wanna use.
We've gotta have something to, for people to come in.
I wanna use some version of this in the, in the village. Oh, there. Okay, I think that mixed use concept is crazy. Okay, I think this already fits in the village, okay? You can have smaller lot sizes. And so that's, that's, that's my answer to that question, okay? I'm much more hopeful with residential, you know, uh, village.
Uh, what about? I was talking to, uh, remember David Van Galder, and he was the one that made the comment to me. This stuck in my mind. And I, I've talked to you about this before with our water and sewer on sixty. He said, there is no way you will ever make up the difference for your water and sewer without some sort of residential componentry. So that, that always stuck with me, you know, and I, he's the development director or director of utilities in Hanover. He said, no, no locality makes their money off water and sewer on commercial alone. It's a near impossibility. You need to have some residential hookups. So I figured if we had, and, and, and you know, Bill, you might be right. I mean, it might be stifling just in the sense that these businesses may not wanna come in because we're forcing them to do a, you know, commercial aspect. So it may never even happen.
They just refuse to talk to us. Allison, can I have? A little, it's about halfway over that same column that's flat rock. This is what's. At Flat Rock, this is a recommended building, okay? The economic opportunity.
Yeah, we have, we are, it needs tweaking.
That ain't gonna get built.
There's nobody sitting at the table that wants that.
Yeah, nobody, nobody wants that. We don't want that. Yeah.
But that's, but that's, that's an example that we've got in here, okay?
If you want, if you.
So I wanna, I guess, so what would you put there? I understand the rights.
Correct.
What would you replace it with? Help me with that.
Something more like, something more like the R two. I don't have a problem with that. The half acre.
The Scottville.
The Scottville model. I'm totally fine with that. Yeah, I think that's fair. You get a little bit of, you get the best of, you know, both worlds. It's.
I'm okay with the four units per acre. And mixing it, you know, I'm okay with that.
Okay, I'm awesome. We're, we're back, we're back, we jumped from answer, we're back to economic opportunity. And you are fine with residential component on sixty. That's a change.
Well, let me ask you, the, what, are you talking about a specific parcel or are you just talking about economic opportunity?
We're just talking about it in general right now. Then we can go back and plot, figure out where it is. So.
Where.
Economic opportunity, where you want it. Yeah.
Economic opportunity, seven eleven. Okay, east of two eighty eight, I have no problem. Sixty, broke the, who sixty east broke area, I have a problem. Sorry about.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, three of us, are you guys fine with that? With economic opportunity, you know, and certain, just, you know, some parcels on east of sixty?
Now you gotta look at where they are and they, and they don't work. We've already demonstrated they don't work.
Let's, let's, let's have that conversation. Because it seemed like I've had this conversation multiple times before. We've even had the Timmons report come in and give us information. Start with the first one, right down the county line. I'll read to you from the Timmons report what they said. They call it VC one in the study. The eastern border of VC one of us to Chesapeake County line is more accessible through property from the county, from that county than internal to Palatine. Says VC is generally accessible only by way of Stonehenge Farm Road. Topography, VC one is isolated and divided internally by several intermittent stream draws. These issues make for a very difficult development potential. Particularly development, particularly difficult for a village-centered development pattern. So we've been told it really wasn't feasible in the study. We know we've got the highest traffic counts at that particular location in the county, thirty-five thousand vehicles a day. We know from the rezoning application with East West Realty that it would require an interplay, excuse me, a new intersection using, I believe it was R cuts. Is what was being recommended by VDA because then no longer doing stoplights for us. So I've said before, I ran on it, campaigned on it, told the whole world, I'm fine with high density residential two places. East of two eighty eight and already seven eleven. Up on Village with the proper scaling. Now, we've got, you know, strategic plan. The issue that, again, I campaigned on nine two eight. Nine to eight residential commercial ratio probably worse in the region. If not, we're in contention for wearing a belt. We have a goal that we just decide last, I believe, meeting or meeting before last. That we would like to realistically take that nine two eight and try to get to maybe eighty-five fifteen. So we go to high density residential already sixty, where we're already challenged during peak hours getting in this county because we are the workforce for the work, you know, for the Richmond region. We are. I always was curious to me when people say, well, we need workforce housing. We've got housing because everybody works in Richmond and Rockville and Chesterfield. We have more than they drive to two eighty eight. Come back in the evening. So we know we're challenged with traffic. We know we're challenged with our residential commercial ratio. So when we continue to add homes, particularly going to high density, that has a multiplier effect. We're digging the hole deeper. So when we say, yeah, we need for hookups, that's all absolutely true. We do need for hookups. If you don't take into consideration these old things I just talked about, traffic, cost of community services, and the actual ability to develop the property, just like we were talking about in Tom's district, about property over there. You were talking about that, all the topography issues.
Well, Bruce.
Okay, if you go to, and you won't have a number, we're gonna be discussing this in your district, you know, the Canadian property. If you go back to the first one of that VC one, you know, we know that it has access management problems. We know it's documented. Without another way out going through Chesterfield, any intensive development is not gonna work. It's not. That's just a fact. This is not me talking. These are the people we commissioned for studying. Timmons. So we know we got access management. We got topography problems. All the things that they talked about in the department, and excuse me, in the study in their evaluation of Billy's Shown Centers when they went up and down like sixty. Now, am I willing to compromise? Yes. I'm willing to compromise to the extent that I'm not gonna shoot myself in the foot and put a cork in the bottle down there at the county line where people can get in at this county. I'm not gonna do that. I'm not going to, just for the sake of getting more hookups, move that cost over to the cost of community services, cost of access management. I'm not gonna do that. Again, I told everybody exactly where I stood on this issue. This is nothing new and I haven't changed.
Um, one thing with the access management, it boggles my mind that we as a board have not addressed that access management issue. I know I'm getting a little off the topic, but I mean, we've known it's been an access management issue for a hundred years. And we haven't done anything with it. But that being said, um.
Now, which issue are you talking about? The intersection or the property?
The intersection. The intersection. Intersection's been, you know, noted as.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about getting in. I'm talking about, I'm talking about getting in and out of that property that you have designated for economic opportunity.
Correct, but you also had mentioned the intersection.
That's a consequence that follows.
But it's a consequence, should be a consequence now.
Well, it's not gonna alleviate the access management getting in.
Yeah, but that's.
It's not going to.
I don't think that's our job to, right, at this point, to worry about the access management on a parcel, to me. I mean, this is a comp plan. It, it, this, this is kind of going back to exactly what Tom said. It's a guide, let's just look at the general area and see if we want it. I'm not gonna go and be like, well, this doesn't have access management, that doesn't. I mean, I don't know if he's got access over to Chesterfield and can get in and out of there, I don't care. Um, it's, it's, my point being is, you know, why don't we look at the generality? And, and we keep saying high density. To half an acre lot. I don't think it's high density. Would you, would you call people Lake Shawnee and tell them they live in high density housing? I mean, I think they would be aghast if you said that. I, I mean.
I think they already know.
But, no, I don't think so. I mean, I think they, you know, think that.
There's a lot of high density housing in that area in Canada, don't be honest about it.
Yeah.
It exists here now.
Yeah.
For a single family.
It put a single family, yeah.
But you have an intro, not use the word is access, you have an entrance problem into this property with any density. Road cannot handle. Demonstrated that, the neighborhood hates the belt. So even if you, so one of, one of the problems is, oh, it's gotta be developed in Chesterfield. You still don't have a road coming on the page, an access to the page. That creates the same level of problems that we're talking about with east west. Which, which just crumbled because it didn't work, okay? And two, the neighborhood came down in droves.
Correct, and that was two hundred and fifty homes, though. I mean, well, we would be talking, but we sniffed that, I mean, you know. So.
We've got problems there with traffic, I'm, I'm sorry, that's not a good voice. Well, let's, let's go back to you, say, well, this is, this is general, you know, we don't need to worry about that. That's what we did, we ran up and down sixty with VC, okay? Okay, it was absolutely, okay, we'll just put them there and.
I would agree.
Okay, they didn't work.
Yeah, they didn't, no.
And that's Timmons study, so we, we have to take some level of practice capital. Where there are no, there, there won't be problems with any of these developments that we haven't thought about. The ones that are obvious news, I think we should, we should pay attention to.
Um. Well, going back to economic opportunity as the generality before we start digging into the map.
To me, it depends on which growth district you have in mind. One of the things I said when I wanted to plan permission is we should have. A plan for each of fifty growth districts, they should not be the same. Each growth district has unique interesting features, okay? And each one of them should have their own set of land use points. Okay, not necessarily moving across all, economic opportunity to me is a perfect example. I see it one way, uh, east of seven eighty, okay? And I see it another way here.
Right.
So, okay, I don't wanna talk about it as a general, since I've already split it.
Due to east of two eighty.
Yes.
The large area.
Economic opportunity.
So, do you view that as being just commercial period? Or housing components to that?
There could be a housing.
So.
Uh, in this one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Nine units? Four units? Or are, would, would, would you? Two?
I don't have any problems with the current nine units over there.
So you do nine units. High density housing in seven eleven.
We already have it.
Right?
Well, we got that in the apartment complex, right? It's fair, okay.
So, here's my question. To try and. If you did that. Where does the water and the sewer come from?
We'd have to solve those problems before we could do it. That's why we're stumbling forward. If somebody's blocking, we'll have to solve those problems. The developers will have to solve.
So, so developers have problems and issues at places they have to be concerned with, right?
Okay. Now, whether we wanna work with the developer. To solve that problem, for instance, there's plenty of water. At seven eleven, plenty of, it's all groundwork. The problem isn't water, the problem is pressure, okay? No pressure down there, so you have to fill the water down. That's what you have to do to solve the water problem. So that's three million bucks, so if you wanna create and add more district or something like that, that might be something we work with. Okay?
I'm curious, like down at seven eleven. We have two hundred, however many apartments, what, I mean, like down there. I don't, I wouldn't support down there nine units per acre, I mean, personally, we have that.
Support something else?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I don't know why.
That was a question to me, I don't have any problem with it.
Well, you know. Here, as I listen to what you're saying there, and. I, my opinion of it is this. If I go to seven eleven and I wanna put in whatever, four units per acre, nine units, whatever the numbers. And I'm the developer, I've got a choice. Do I wanna spend three million dollars to get water hookups or whatever I gotta do, plus to do whatever I need to do to develop that property? So I have that option to spend that money. If I go up to the, about sixty parcels and there's access management problems and I can't get there. I've got money to buy the guy that owns the cell, Shell station, or money to buy the lot that comes in from Chesterfield. And I can change the intersection and I can pay for the R cut, um, why shouldn't I have that opportunity?
Cause you're gonna be, you know, bad enough, but why can't I? You can't get enough money.
Well, I don't know, I'm not a developer, I'm, you know, I can tell you about the metal, rubber and glass cars, but I, I can't, I'm not sure I could.
Remember Eagle backed out of that property because they didn't wanna build the intersection. That's the reason they backed out. East West thought they could get away with it and then East West found that it was getting more and more expensive. The only reason there were only two hundred and forty nine units in there is when they couldn't get a third entrance.
So Bill. I, I, I understand your point, but my point is, you know, if you make an investment and you want a hundred percent return, that may be happy and wonderful for you. But if I wanna make an investment, all I want is a fifty percent return, I might be able to do that.
What's your point?
My point is, let the developer make that, have that option. The developer has the option to go in there. It, it, I don't disagree with the fact that there's a traffic issue there for three hours of a twenty-four hour day. I don't disagree with that at all. There is. Um, I don't know that it's gonna be as what Karen said, there'll be two hundred and fifty homes going there or whatever, it breaks out at four. I don't have a problem with four. But if you give that person, that company, or whoever they are, developer, the opportunity. And we say ninety two to eight, agree with that. And we wanna go to eighty five fifteen, don't disagree with that. But we've been saying that for quite a few years. And all I'm trying to, to point out is. If somebody comes here, I don't know who comes here, I don't, maybe somebody from California that gives his daughter all kind of money to go buy a spot. In the county and she can develop it and do whatever she wants to do. The same thing could happen here. I'm not gonna, I don't wanna be the one that dictates and say, oh, nobody can come here and do this because it, it just won't work because they don't have the money to do it. They may have the money. They may think that, you know, they can put any package together whatsoever and make it profitable for them. So I think they, if that, if that person exists, or that company exists, they should have that opportunity. That's all I'm saying, that's all I'm saying.
I'm not gonna support residential problem.
Let, let, ma'am chair, if I may, let's just take the argument of what's feasible, what's not feasible, just take it off the table. Question is. What do we want in this county? The people told us that they want this county. That's the question. Now, we can sit in, how to size all we want to. But what might or can happen? We don't know. But our job is to lay out a vision in this comprehensive plan. One that's embraced by citizens of this county. About what we want. It's not what could happen, what's feasible, what kind of return somebody might give. Those are not issues on paper. I'll go back to what the people told us. We ran off of it. Go back to when we developed the strategic plan. What did we say? That's what's governing there. Okay?
Going back, there's a column that gets three wires, the little one's wire, which do you want?
So basically.
That's what I ran on.
We're, we're all in agreement, we don't want the hot. Let's stop saying apartments, high density, we don't want that. I think we're all in unanimity, we don't want that, you know? So to keep kind of throwing that back, like, if you have, if you have a residential area, it somehow implies that you want this high density development all over the county. I mean, look, guys, look, look at our map. Look at our map. Whole county's green, the entire county is green, which is good, it's good. That's what the people demanded. But on the flip side, here we are, we say that we want, you know, to, we gotta get economic development, get economic development, we want, you know. What we've been doing isn't working with economic development, you know? And I'm not saying, I know David, yes, you can flip the sides of the ledger one way or the other, but if you have a senior living with, you know, forty homes behind, you know, a, a little. You know, industrial park or something. That's not. Going to be the, the end of Powhatan County as we know it. Um, and it's kind of to Mike's point, I mean, we have no idea what kind of opportunities can present themselves. We have no clue. And, and I, I don't care so much about, you know, this property, that property, but it's a general thing, I mean, to have. We just all voted, minus you, Mr. Cox, for, you know, Michael Potter's development. It was, you know, small scale, and granted that was up in the village, but if something like that was down. You know, someplace, you know, east of sixty with that, not with the apartments, but, um, you know, with like a little residential componentry to it. Cause I have heard, you're right. We want Powhatan rural, we all want that. But on the flip side of it, I have heard, people don't have housing options. People that are older don't want ten acres to take care of. People that are younger don't want ten acres to take care of. And if we, I just think we need to just have a little, little section of the county that could possibly offer that. That's all I'm saying. Where that is, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I can't have, back looking the upper of the second column, it says the big myth. Should be two pounds. That's okay, it's not in there. Oh, no, there's number three. Designated growth there is only five percent of the county, so as long as we protect the other ninety, five percent, let's, don't, no, where you put anything you want. That's one rooftop myth, okay? It came out of that. What was, we talked about, doesn't matter what you put in there, but we're protecting ninety five percent, I think it does matter.
Of course, yeah, absolutely.
I want, I see this. As a commercial script, that's what it, that's a data hole. I don't want to, we have all kinds of traffic problems, we have all types of access problems there, and I don't want that.
Now, the one thing you have to remember, depending on what kind of commercial development you get, that can exacerbate your traffic problems more so than a residential development. So depending, I mean, you're gonna get more out of a Walmart, I mean.
And that's, that's a reason, I, you well know, okay, I'm not interested in seeing. Commercial development to retail, which is hard written. That's the way we go down. So, that was, I like the way that approach was done yesterday, you're right. I like stopping some of the eleven thousand people that leave every day from head to face the wall. I like using sixty eastbound, excuse me, westbound in the morning for traffic. I like those things, okay? I don't want. Need more residents.
Offer a casino for that area.
It is the go-to.
They say we want the comfort, we're kidding. They're gonna come here, they're gonna leave.
You're gonna call it sort of.
Yes, Tom, I would, yes.
Okay.
Hang on, hang on, guys, Tom.
I told you a lot of one, you have games of chance.
I, I find it interesting, since I've had conversations with some of the citizens that have contacted me in person, by phone, email, whatever. I, I, it, it has been universally, we don't want high density housing. But, and it, they say no high density housing, okay, I, I fully agree. But I, I got so many. And some of them are, well, we just moved to Powhatan and we don't want high density housing, and it's great they moved to Powhatan. So, I started asking beyond that, what do you view as high density housing? And I thought the views that they provided really changed the concept of what they think high density housing is versus maybe what a perception. Or what my perception is of high density housing. And it's interesting because it goes from literally one end of the spectrum to the other. I've had people telling me, we shouldn't be building on any lot that's less than ten acres. Anything more than that is, is too high density. At ten acres. My, my personal lot's like three point eight something.
My's a hundred and twenty.
I got three point eight, and that's plenty for me right now, I'd love to have some more natural area. But my other people are going, well, you know, four houses an acre would be okay. I think it's all based on where they're, what their perception is and where they came from, quite honestly. So I mean, defining what that high density is, is part of, I guess, my challenge with this and going, yeah, I'm okay with this, or I'm not okay with that. And I, I guess that's kind of where I come from. With that four acre, or four per acre in certain areas being agreeable. Because we do have a lot of area that has significantly larger. Uh, and I think some of this came to me because I started looking up the, the, uh, academic definition of what high density housing is. And it truly, the academic answer is really vague, and, and in theory, you could have hundred acre parcels and. You'd still have high density with one piece of, one property, one home, because it's all based on where you are right then and there. So. So that's all I wanna say.
We're getting kind of a little bit wrong. Karen, take. Take the economic opportunity and break it down. Okay, the percentage that can be residential.
Yes.
What percentage would you want, okay? And then what kind of, what kind of density?
Uh, it's, it's thirty, if I'm not mistaken, is that thirty percent right now? I'm okay with the thirty, I think, I think that's reasonable, um, I think that's probably fair. I could go to the four units an acre, but I mean, if, if that's a deal breaker, I could, you know, two units an acre. I mean, you need to make it such that it's worth the developer to the water and sewer, um.
So that's a hundred and twenty.
I mean, if you, but then you gotta have like the setbacks and, you know.
So. Andrew, if I have a hundred acre park, thirty percent of it can be residential. Okay? And it's four units per acre. I can have a hundred and twenty units, okay? Is that be able to? Now, is that reasonable? If VC PD or VR PD, you can make it work for a hundred and twenty units.
Okay.
Because you can change the lot size, okay?
Yeah, yes, 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 yes.
It changes dramatically. Especially from VR.
Correct, when you go to VR PD.
VR, you have to have.
Exact, the other one you can, you obviously have the flexibility.
A lot.
Yeah.
Ten thousand square foot.
And so all of these, the zoning will be updated.
Took us three years, ladies.
I know. Details. But.
So anyway, but I'm just getting back to you, 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 you still can give substantial numbers of homes, okay? In a mythical hundred acre lot, okay, with four units per acre. That's, that's. That's, that's.
Yeah, that's a lot, I agree.
But you would have a hundred and twenty homes on thirty acres and seventy acres of.
Commercial developments, yeah.
Business.
Businesses, yeah. Which the odds of that happening are probably really slim.
Now, getting the residential are very good.
Correct, getting the other one is slim.
Tom, can we, can we dictate things?
We need to take things.
Uh, now we have this commercial residential development. Now, we've told them the commercial has to be built before you go first house?
Yes, no.
Okay. That's good.
Because that's it would be proper condition.
Yeah. Okay.
But is there proper condition, or would it be something that we require on our zoning?
Most places do a proper condition where.
What is?
You can build more, Bushland did that as part of their Manningtown ferry, or Manningtown project. They had a little certain amount of commercial space prior to constructing certain residential, so I'll say, prior to issuance of the fiftieth building permit in the project, you have to have forty thousand square feet of commercial. So, yeah, Bushland, that's part of the Manningtown project. Project, project, Tom would say whether or not it's appropriate in zoning ordinance, but the best way to do it would be to proffer the right.
Right.
Somebody comes in and says, I want to do this mixed-use development. And I would proffer that X percent of the rest of the commercial stuff.
What tells the planning director to ask for that problem?
Well, the, like, the comp plan says, for example, dispersion. It talks about the phasing, so I'll point to the comp plan, say, kind of these projects.
Fourth and like east-west stores, no, 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 no. Oh, that one went down, that one nailed right.
But, so.
Go, go back to. You want me to consider residential? You gotta get it where I can visualize it, okay?
I think the thirty percent is very palatable. I think that's a reasonable expectation for myself. Do you guys think that's reasonable? I mean, at least can we?
Translated the homes, I'm sorry.
I mean.
Hundred and twenty. Does it take you to a very?
Right.
Thirty percent, I'm sorry. And the other thing I want you to help me visualize is what kind of homes you want. There can be townhomes, there can be apartments.
No apartments.
Apartments are out, so. Townhomes. Uh, in the east-west, we're down to eight thousand square feet, I think, or six thousand square feet. I know a lot of, a lot of townhomes, a little bit of area. I'm not trying to, not trying to beat stuff, I'm just trying to.
Right, and, and that's what I was gonna say, honestly, I don't have a specific view of what my, you know, my expectation is. I generally don't have it. I just think having some areas of mixed use is not necessarily a horrible thing. That, that's all I'm saying. How that looks, how that's developed, I totally open the negotiating, going back and forth on it.
There's not really mixed use, it just happens to be separate uses of the same property.
But they do call it mixed use, I mean, they, they, they do.
Well, look. No, they don't. There's so many different definitions floating around, like mixed use is kind of like when you start talking about workforce housing, affordable housing, the terms get interchangeable. So I want to make sure when we get to mixed use, for example, we know what the definition is. Versus what Bill just said, where you got commercial and residential on the same parcel, but in two different places.
Is that considered mixed use?
I would say mixed use is different uses in close proximity, whether or not it's horizontally mixed use or vertical use. I think I've imagined an act of not, or two would probably more areas. So it's horizontal.
I think all of them are mixed use.
Yeah.
Might help, I think we're all struggling with the, it's all very theoretical, it's not moving, we'll come back with some examples. I'm thinking like if we, if we imagined if a bridge had developed differently, if that developed under this, we could give you some examples. If we use the way they're currently drafted, maybe a lower density city. There's a front, we said that with these densities, that would be we use this process, funny numbers, they say there's a lot of people maybe spits out a number that's kind of scary. I don't like that, getting examples of real development, but also kind of reimagined developments that we're comfortable with here. If they had that residential component, I mean, just trying to think of candidates.
Yeah. I know, we're a little bit of a.
Difficult. If we have something can, we'd very easily say, that scares me.
That might be helpful. Would you guys find that helpful?
Anything that's actually comparable, like a little bit, is going to help me.
Okay, that would be helpful. So.
We're talking about the Canadian problem. I don't understand why the discussions that occurred, okay, last time. That is perfect for life, does it? Solves all the problems of entrance and out. And you don't have to go through Holly. Look up Oak Ridge, have an entrance, we go in and go out. Like Sue, we do that. Do you underst- do you understand ownership of that?
No.
Okay, it's a Canadian company, that buys parcels in the metropolitan area. What's the purpose of that? In terms of where to, who owns the property, makes no difference.
Yeah, yeah.
No difference at all, that's just my opinion. I don't care who owns the property. Okay.
Um. What do you guys think about making that industrial? I mean, I do know we need more industrial property in the county, that was one thing that, you know, Brett had mentioned and Roxanne, I mean, I, I'm okay making something more, having more industrial property.
Industrial or light industrial?
It would be industrial. I mean.
Light industrial next to it.
But you, the zoning designation, the future land use map is industrial. Yeah, so it's, it's not differentiated as. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, so if you, if you're okay with an industrial next to Holly Hills, you know.
Actually, what I wanted with economic opportunity without the residential components.
Economic opportunity does give you more options there. You know, it does.
Brett. What about industrial? You know, we have Oak Ridge over there. Oak Ridge is at capacity or close to capacity now.
More or less left, yeah, not much.
But they're done, okay. What is your economic development app telling you about that property over there?
I don't think that one could be good for some kind of like industrial, sure. That's, that gets about south three because of a different offering, a heavy, more heavy industrial lot, so. As a bridge is essentially built out, I think we do need to look for what's the next opportunity to have a light industrial.
I think all of us would agree, Oak Ridge is a pretty good development.
Andrew, I think from sixteen. I do, I do think one challenge I can somehow address in here is, you know, there's a ton of lots in Holly Hills that back up to that property, so if I got rezoned, I got, I got notice that the property behind me is being rezoned to industrial.
They're gonna freak out.
I mean, so I think we need to somehow talk about offering more explicitly in the black residential, because.
Well, let's, let's go back to Oak Ridge. Have they been a good neighbor to people?
They don't really have too many neighbors, really. There's some people on county line right there.
I mean, do they have any, the uses of that, I don't see them as being onerous.
Yeah, and they, and they proffer, I think, a hundred-foot buffers, buffers around the edge. So I think, I think that's the, the key is the buffering.
I'll tell you what's gonna get the people upset. Being that you brought Holly Hills, is if you try to pull that sub road, there's something in the subdivision to give the people a second entrance out.
They would have to have a second entrance.
If you want to get them upset, do that.
Well.
No, I mean, you're talking about getting people upset, I mean, because that was an issue, you know? Maybe for you, Andrew.
Except when they were already rezoned, the commercials were fine.
Yeah, that was good for you.
What do you all, so what, what do you, what do you want to do? I mean, we, we don't have economic opportunity nailed down, we don't.
Well, the only other one economic opportunity is down here, Dorset.
Dorset, yeah.
So what's everybody's thought on that?
I'm sorry, you just already started.
Okay, so just leave it there, and I'll stop that. Uh, Mr. Sowers?
Hey, we have, we have one rezoning application, that was the name for part of that property that's light industrial. That was just, they all.
I am fine keeping that an economic opportunity, personally, I'm think that that's defined. Well, sorry, I mean, we, we don't agree, I mean, it's just, yeah.
It's just no surprise. It's the residential component that I'm gonna push back.
Okay, is, is, so if, say we get rid of all this residential, so you don't want any kind of opportunities for? Be nice.
The opportunity is economic opportunity, light adjustment, residential.
Right, but I'm saying like, say we get rid of all this economic opportunity, and we got rid of neighborhood residential, keep going on the list, and see what else we can get rid of. I mean.
I. That's all, that's all that's left in east and seven west. The other, the other back over in village.
So.
You got a little economic opportunity. You have already covered everything.
I'm just trying to think if there's any way we can get agreement on this plan.
I'm okay with economic opportunity. I am as well.
And I am as well. And I, I would love to have some way that we could get agreement on the plan and if we're tweaking, you know, look at areas for property or work on economic opportunity, you know, something. I mean, are you guys open to considering it in any way, shape, or form, or absolutely one hundred percent not? You know, uh, is it an absolute no-go for both of you? No residential componentry, or, you know?
Well, here's, yeah, I said this last meeting. You'll get the residential. I have no doubt. You don't have any problem at all. You know, as I pointed to you in Virginia Business Magazine, it's gonna be the decade suburbs. People are moving over here, they'll all be too glad or happy to accommodate you. You'll get the residential, not a problem in this world.
But we can phase in the commercial. That's what we were talking about earlier.
The other thing I talked about was the paradigm change. I'd be the first one if I thought, for example, that having a thirty percent residential component would somehow materialize commercial development storefronts over here in the county. That'd be all I. I don't believe that. If you was gonna see commercial development on a lot of these parcels that we're talking about today, it would have happened by now. So to say that we're gonna add a residential component and then the commercial is gonna materialize, I don't believe that. So tho- those are the reasons why I can't support it, again, going back to what I said before. It's about what we want, what we have provision for this county. And unfortunately, we're in a unique situation where getting in this county isn't the same as Chesterfield. We don't have the avenues for ingress and egress that other counties have. Not even like Bushland. So we're pretty much restricted to how we get in this county. To a couple of roads, one of which is Route sixty. Already, you're seeing the traffic, it's building. This won't continue. So it's what Charles vision for the county. That's, that's what's going, guy, vote on this, this comprehensive plan. And.
I'm sorry. Come on.
Like I said, support the residential component for those reasons.
Help me understand, you, you bring up the traffic concerns on sixty, which, you know, yeah, we know that's an issue. Yet we have no problem putting higher-density residential in the village when they have to traverse across the entire county.
We'll, we'll see where we.
Yeah, I mean, you know, but historically, you know what I'm saying, from what I've seen.
That would have, that would have been modest in terms of number.
And we can make it modest elsewhere, you know, that's the thing.
Y'all want to put more in the village, then I want to sit, okay? I already know that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, we if you have your housing down where you're closer and they're not utilizing your road services, you know, your, your roads as much, you're actually putting less pressure on your roads from a planning perspective.
Each one of these parts is access management.
Every person in our county has access management problems.
In, in the village, you don't.
No, we just, we did a waiver, we did a waiver for the village, we, we just did a waiver. We, we've got access management problems all over, and I'm not minimizing it, but we, we do, it, it's a, it's a challenge.
The reason we gave the waiver is because we didn't perceive there would be a problem, given the way we're giving the amount of traffic and that.
Correct, but nonetheless, it was an access management waiver. Um.
Or development I didn't support.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna go against the waiver once it's done.
Yeah. Um, so. Okay, guys, uh. Brett, can you do a little work on that economic opportunity with the numbers, at least?
Get you some numbers, some examples, thanks, so you can kind of.
Please look at it.
What, what about the Canadian problem?
Oh.
What would the idea of industrialism?
Right.
You're shaking your head, no?
No, I'm shaking my head all the way.
Okay.
I mean, I.
You can get in and you can get out if it's tied in to Oak Ridge. And I believe Mr. Curtis wants a property that allows it to go into Oak Ridge.
Okay, he does. Um, what do you guys think? Making it industrial, keeping it economic opportunity? If we like the economic opportunity, Tom, Mike.
I tend to stay with the economic.
Opportunity. I know where you are, and Mike?
On that piece of property. It's kind of like what Tom, what Tom talked about in the beginning.
Parcival with properties, it's painful, I know, yeah.
Light industrial.
Is industrial.
Again, so that's a thought would be an extension of what is now a very successful.
I would tend to leave it.
I'm fine with that, I'm fine with it, it's industrial, that's.
I gave it a fight. I can't have my way all.
Yes, exactly.
So there, there's some little smaller parcels which are no bridge.
I think we should make those light industrial, make that a piece of block. Tom, working on the block.
So that economic opportunity all comes through.
And then we move up to Flat Rock. And I am fine with that staying economic opportunity.
Uh. I could ask a question. Andrew, there was a note talking about the sour pieces, gonna be light industrial. There was some confusion, he said.
There was some confusion, you said, you had, it was some confusion of the parcels. You made a statement that the GIS system.
Yeah, this, this, this one parcel is.
Is this, is this, is this a, a system problem or just this?
No, they just submitted, somebody submitted a property line adjustment in the past few months.
Okay, when I heard that, I just wanted to know if the GIS system was messed up.
No, it's not messed up, it's just a delay.
Okay, then that's.
Yeah.
So, um.
How much of that area is, let's show us economic opportunity is potentially gonna be rezoned like this?
Uh. About this. It's like. A chunk gray. It's this and this. So it's basically a, a form of a small.
Little area.
Yeah.
Okay.
Question. Since you want economic opportunity, we talked about phasing of projects and a requirement. That you don't just do the residential and then you leave the commercial standing. What is gonna be our policy with that? Okay. And we use say. Thirty percent residential, we'd say thirty percent of the property, and we're talking about. Property size of a hundred, that'd be thirty acres, and then the other would be seventy acres. If I did part of the thirty percent in residential, what part of the seventy percent would have to be in commercial? And what does that look like in terms of square foot? Or our scope of the commercial? To match the development that would be occurring on a phase basis within the thirty percent?
I think you'd have to determine that.
Well, I'm, I'm looking for, I'm looking for staff input.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
I'm looking for staff input. If you're, if you're gonna do this, I wanna see what the rules are that goes along that are gonna be governing this.
I mean, I think it really would vary in the project. I give us, you know, age restricted component, I think you probably allow a little bit more residential. Then if it was. Market or what the, what the business uses are, I think it could be really.
So we're gonna negotiate each rezoning? Is that, is that what you're telling me?
You always negotiate.
Yeah. No, I want some guidelines out there, you know, something other than it's all in the ethernet.
I think. I think we walk a fine line with this comp plan with being too specific. In providing.
Okay, just put the comp plan aside. Let's, let's move to the zoning district.
Oh, I mean, I think there could be some policy document that says.
That's where, that's where I'm headed, okay? I'm not, but where I'm looking is down the road, if you're going to implement. This land use designation with a zoning district or zoning districts. What is gonna be as policy guidelines? For the, whatever phasing we say we wanna do. That's where I'm, that's where I'm going.
Yeah, there could be some policy, I don't know if it'd be based on individual footage or how traffic can be a trap.
Well, yeah, I, I don't know either, Andrew, that's why I'm asking the question, you know, I, I truly don't know.
I don't know, like. As you said, I don't think, the, you know, maybe a policy document, not specific.
I, I was gonna say, I think we're a little off the, the comp plan. Like, we don't even know if we're gonna do this yet, so let's, you know. You know, get, get some. Affirmation of what we are gonna have this look like before we start worrying about the policies behind it. That, that's all I'm saying.
I understand, but like I said, you know, I, I need to have some idea with this sentence, what it'll look like when it finally does come out of the oven. That's all my asking. One on economic opportunity. We have, running out of time for today. I'd like to change this list of zoning districts or land use plans, okay? That we've been waiting.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
I'd like to go to one that's not listed on it, because I'd like to get Andrew's, okay? We dropped the rural enterprise zone gap.
Ah, yes, 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 yes.
And I'd like, so we've got Andrew here, I'd like to talk about that, okay?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Uh, why, why are we dropped?
Since 2019, no one's, and granted, it's not a lot of time, but no one's really come forward to try to do a commercial business in that gap. And we've had the rezoning for a church, but not any commercial businesses. There's not a lot of interest in the gap, there's been warrants where they're. And it was also kind of confusing this, what that designation means, like applies on top of something else. Also, you know. The gap gives someone need to continue this strip development all the way down. So it shouldn't seem like it was the most effective or. Clear or. Based on what's happened in the past two, two years.
We, if we took position, if we haven't had any interest in it, we would have gotten right with the conservation subdivision, which has been sitting out there since 2019.
Well, we actually have a conservation subdivision application.
Yes, but, but, but for ten years we have.
Yeah, but, you know, we also adjusted the rules to, um.
Well, we never really, in my opinion, we never really developed. The rural enterprise zone and the gap. Um, you know, area I'm talking about?
I, I am not familiar with that.
So when you go from Academy Road to Flat Rock. There's no water and sewer.
Right.
And. That was a green, there's some businesses there, okay? Sorry, but that was a green space so that you would never have continuous development. So, in the last. Iteration of the comp plan, we got a little bit down the path, okay? And so they said, well, this is, this would be businesses, would be residential. And they had to be set back so that you couldn't see that sort of. Then that would be okay, okay? You have a green buffer more or less going down. And never got much asset, I don't believe.
One, one other important point to make, when we did that, updated the comp plan, we also had RC in there to deal with. So we were struggling with.
Yes.
We call this all green and undeveloped, but we have a whole strip RC. What happens if somebody comes in for an RC project? So we were kind of trying to accommodate RC there because it was existing, but now that RC no longer exists. We don't have to accommodate that. I think it's a good idea, it's a good idea, but we don't have that to have to deal with, which we did in time.
I would like us to have some level of.
See, it's kind of interesting, is that area, I think, I probably wouldn't have anything for a while. Since we have to review this every five years, let's see if we can put a, get a push to have any kind of economic development. Where we have our water and sewer where we want it as opposed to this gap area.
I just, what are we gonna do with the gap area?
Keep it A-ten.
I mean, we, we, this, this eliminated any, any restrictions on.
You talk about road issues, rural character, you keep that, you know.
Well, that's what I want to talk about, okay? It was just wrong.
There's no water and sewer?
Well, and since there's no, that's discussed, that's okay, I don't want anymore.
Yeah.
Do we give it a designation? Do we put any rules there? Or do we just leave it like? Let me ask a question. In which scenario are we likely to get development? Andrew, Brett? If we kept the rural enterprise zone, would we get development? Or if we go to A-ten, as Karen just said? Do we get development? Because if we don't get development on one or the other, and the goal is to keep it green, then that's the one we should be going with.
So. Yeah. Yeah, if your goal is not to get the belt, then I would keep it green.
If you would go to A-ten?
Keep how it is in the draft now.
In the draft now.
Yeah.
So, what you're saying is with the enterprise zone or rural enterprise zone, we would be more likely to give development in that area. So, then I'll support that.
You'll support the rural enterprise zone, the green, okay, the green.
I just wanted to have some discussion, so we'll see what would go happen, that's fine.
Okay, um, all right, it's five o'clock. I say let's wrap it up. Okay, we'll now have the second public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and full address for the record. Everyone, please stand up. Your name and address, ma'am.
My name is Carrie Adams. I live seventeen minutes into New York. And I would really love for you guys to consider the subdivision, if you will, for tiny homes. I've done a lot of research, like, one of the people that you mentioned, Chairman, I'm a lady among baby boomers. And I'm someone who doesn't want to make just take care of a small, parcel of buildings small. Oh, we're, we're applying all this, and that's successfully in Florida, Texas. Oregon, Oregon, these communities are celebrating quickly, waiting list, and that was a moving for them. And what's great about them is, they sometimes were afraid that, oh, because I mean, it's tiny homes, they're gonna have such, you know, gosh, rural. Charter homes or, or pretty ghetto, but it's actually the opposite because the people that are creating these communities. They create revenue from, because they create a unique, attractive community. And typical, these tiny homes, they're efficient, they know also their customs. They're efficient, they're upscale, and most of them are professionals, like myself, I'm a co-reporter. And they're working home, and almost all of our environments, we're conscious, they want to have less footprint and draw less ones. You know, to resource themselves and actually get back to the community that they wouldn't, so they network to do that. And it's been interesting because a lot of counties who are doing this are finding it a benefit because. Properties that are normally unmarketable, or, you know, the traditional homes. I put a tiny home on, because a lot of people build tiny homes, they have either a refrigerator toilet or a composting toilet, so you don't have to worry about the deceptive system. And also, you talk about, worry about. Number of people in a small area, most of these tiny homes, it's one, two people. They're either young couples that are using the tiny homes to stop gap to get to the point where they can afford to go home. Of course, someone might need some downsides, but don't, I don't want to give out comfort. Because a tiny home is your rental apartment, certainly. And it attracts investment, I know of a retired couple in the county. Who are interested, actually people I'm saying with, the land across the road from us is completely, it's been listed and cleared, it's temporarily cleared, and they're interested in. Investing some property to create a tiny home community for this. And as a gentleman, and as it's Tom Stanton, he builds tiny homes. I think that in more information, I just wanted to ask you some questions, I think. I wonder who you are, Matt. And so, a lot of us people my age, we don't want to pay the high rent of apartments, fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars. We can control our, we'll be able to sit up, be able to build something, it's a lot of us, you know, we're. Hard to afford certain things or something, we need to wait around back financially. Tiny homes are excellent option for this, so. Any questions? I hear you talking about properties, um, it's very. Rosemont area, and that might be someplace that, you know, tiny homes would be a good fit. Any questions? You know, like I said, I can bring some information.
Okay.
I have another meeting, something Allison mentioned that.
Thank you.
Have a serious change of world friends.
Okay, yes, thank you, ma'am, I appreciate that. Anyone else in here? Anybody on Zoom? Oh, we do have one.
Lady Crawford, three, three, oh, here it's free. Uh, my question is, was part of the land use work sent back to the Fan Commission a couple meetings ago?
Not yet.
No? Okay. And to end on a high note, I have a new sentiment for you all. I appreciate it, and I know most of you reporting here. I have a new appreciation for the efforts in term. So you announced that you retired when you came here. Don't give in to being tired, and don't give in to the difficulty of this work. Very, very important, if you're not, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody on Zoom?
So it's clear.
Awesome, we'll close the public comment period. County administrator comments?
No comments, ma'am.
Or comments?
Bye.